Hello and welcome to the City of Cedar Falls Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for Wednesday, September 24, 2025. I call this meeting to order. Could I get a roll call, please?
Alberhaskey.
Here.
Gribovich.
Here.
Hartley.
Here.
Henderson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Moser.
Sorensen.
Here.
Stahlnecker.
Here.
Watkins.
Here.
One absent tonight.
All right, thank you. First order of business tonight is approval of minutes. Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right, motion carries. This is the time of the meeting for any public comment for anything that's not on the agenda. I see no one, so no one to come up. So we will move on to old business. Second agenda item on old business, well, let me, there's two items of old business for public hearing tonight, and I think Tom's going to present those together. It's a land use map amendment from high-density residential to a neighborhood commercial or mixed-use. And then number three is a rezoning from R4 residential to C2 commercial. And I will let Tom take that and present that, and then we will have to vote on both of those items separately.
Yes, thank you. The reason there are two separate items, the land use map amendment has to be approved in order for the rezoning to be approved. So this, this site is located on the northwest corner of Cerly Boulevard and Main Street. You can see the site that the rezoning site's highlighted in yellow. The property to the south is already zone C2, but that's the property, that one of the, the other property that's involved in the land use map amendment. The applicant has had plans for redevelopment of this particular site. You may remember, it used to be the Senex gas station. It's now the prime mark. The building, the site for the rezoning is currently a dog grooming station. The rezoning site is about .15 acres. The site with the gas station is an additional .27 acres that, for the land use map amendment. This again, request is to change the zoning at 2309 Main Street from R4 multi, multiple resident district to C2 commercial district to allow the redevelopment of the parcel. And then the one to the south will be redeveloped in the future. The applicants proposing to redevelop both sites and use on the lower one, a two-story structure that will have commercial space below and residential above. That's the current plans. And you see new packet there are sort mock-ups to what, how that would look. The plan also shows a potential drive-through on the west side of the building, but this will have to come back before the commission for site plan approval because the residential factor in it. And then that'll be, have to be looked at too, whether that'll work out on the site plan. So this is just, doesn't make sense to change the zoning and the land use for this corner. The, since the, at the start, the applicant started this, we've had the redevelopment of Main Street with the bike lanes and turning lanes and in the sidewalk improvements. It was all part of the plan. The criteria for rezoning is that first of all, consistent with the future land use. This property is in the College Hill Vision Plan. It's identified as the gateway area. It should be pedestrian and bike-oriented, and it should provide a sense of a place, of placemaking and arrival to the College Hill area is the purpose. The Main Street improvements, again, the travel lanes were reduced, bicycle lanes were added, there's trail connections now, new sidewalks, and then the roundabout is included in there. The adopted College Hill plan illustrates for this site that it's an opportunity for a gateway to College Hill. It encourages mixed-use redevelopment to be street-oriented at the corner and create that sense of arrival. And again, the propose, the proposal, if it comes through, does show that the building is located up on, will be located up along Main Street, and the obvious commercial spaces are addressing the street, they'd be pedestrian, but it, but we'll, can talk that when the plan comes through. The future land use for this area is high-density residential, which doesn't really work well with the C2. C2 is a, is a lower intensity commercial use. The high-density residential is a buffer between, just services buffer between commercial and low-density residential, but in this case, the land use doesn't fit with the proposed zoning. And you can see that this high-density to the north, the neighborhood commercial, or community commercial is to the south and the east of there. Some of the land use categories, the characteristics for the neighborhood commercial mixed-use include a range of low-impact commercial uses, accommodates service-related uses, residential units, and includes a low-to-moderate building impervious area coverage. So those are things that we'd look at. And again, it should be located along major streets, and these both are very, are fairly major streets. Main is arterial. It should identify the pedestrian scale. The proposal, when we see it come through in the future, does show that this is located along Main Street. Traffic flow will be good in this area. The zoning will require buffering, so the, any future use will be buffered from the residential area around it. There should be adequate access to public services. This is in an older area of the city, so it has all the public services and utilities for development there. And then adequate access to street network, which in this case, the Main Street improvements are complete, and Cerly Boulevard, they've got the roundabouts, so the, the traffic connection should be adequate for this site. Staff recommends approval of the land use map amendment, LU 2503, for the two properties shown at the southwest corner of the intersection of, excuse me, it should be the northwest corner of the intersection of Cerly Boulevard and Main Street, from high-density residential to neighborhood commercial mixed-use. And for the rezoning, RZ 2503, a rezoning for just the property at 2309 Main Street, from R4 Residence District to C2 Commercial District. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, and maybe it's just nitpicky, but for the sake of the motion, am I reading it correctly that 2323 is already C2? So the motion and the, we will really only be voting on 2309, is that correct?
For the rezoning.
For the rezoning.
The land use amendment, you'd be doing.
Land use is both.
Both, yes.
Thank you. That's what I was missing.
Thank you.
Any more questions for staff?
Tom, what constitutes as the, as a buffer in this scenario against the low residential? Is it a landscaping fence?
It would be a landscaping fence, and it'd be a certain distance from development, it'd be a certain distance from the property line as well. In this case, driveways are 10, required to be 10 feet.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the petitioner here tonight like to speak to this item. Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this item? I will bring it back to the commission for discussion and a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept. Are we just voting on number two, item number two?
We're going to vote on number two, and then right after it, vote on three.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I will say, I like this idea. I like what they're proposing will come here. I think it'll be a huge improvement to the, that intersection, so look forward to what will come. So we have a motion and a second. A roll call vote, please.
Alberhaskey.
Aye.
Gribovich.
Aye.
Hartley.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Sorensen.
Aye.
Stahlnecker.
Aye.
Watkins.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.
All right, thank you. That carries, and now we are looking for a motion for number three, the rezoning from R4 residential to C2 commercial.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Not sure if this is out of place, but I would just like to make the plug. I agree that I like the, the whole development as a rule, and I will be very interested in the buffering. Talk about a drive-through. There are single-family homes directly abutting this property, so I do think that'll be a very important part when we get there. Just want to make that known.
All right, did we have a motion and a second, right?
Yes, we do.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Alberhaskey.
Aye.
Gribovich.
Aye.
Hartley.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Sorensen.
Aye.
Stahlnecker.
Aye.
Watkins.
Aye.
Okay. That will then move on to council.
All right, thank you very much. That was the old business section. Now we move on to new business. We have two agenda items that we will be setting a public hearing on. The fourth item tonight is a rezoning from A1 agriculture to an M1P planned light industrial. And I'm not sure who's presenting.
That's me.
Michelle's presenting this, thank you.
Thank you. So the site is located, what used to be 2603 and 2617 South Union Road. The city purchased these properties, and we're able to annex the, this property in the property in red in 2000, well, in February 2025, from this, let's see, with the State of Iowa City Development Board approving that decision. The lots are to expand our industrial park, and the yellow is where our site visit, our site is going to be for tonight. In the rezoning, there's three criteria to look at. And the first is, is the proposal compliant with our comprehensive plan. In this case, yes, the two lots, which are not highlighted today, are both within industrial, in the land use map. And then the second criteria is access to public services. So these lots will be folded into the West Viking Road Phase 5 preliminary plat, and make those industrial lots a little bit bigger for development. And so they do have access to public services. And then this third criteria is access to adequate street network. And again, since they, these two lots will be folded into that industrial park, they will have access to the streets needed. And this is the master plan that was part of the original preliminary plat that was approved in 2022. The green area has already been through the planning and zoning process for final plat and is now developed land, or for developed land. The purple, which looks kind of blue today, is the next phase of development, and then the red is for future development. And with that, staff recommends approval, oops, nope, we don't. Staff recommends commission discussion and set up a public hearing for October 8th for this rezoning, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions for staff on this?
I have a question. If you go back to the map that shows the different colors, so will there be still zoned A1 left over on this, on this map then?
No. Once this project gets approved through planning and zoning and city council, then it would be zoned M1P light industrial planned.
So there's no remaining parcel that would have to go through this process?
The larger lots that were part of the original annexation will have to go forward with this, with another rezoning. It's not ready for development yet.
Okay.
And that's the area to the south, right, Michelle?
Correct, and it's, and it's, in red outline on the map.
Yep. So the reason is, is it's not, doesn't meet all the criteria?
Correct, at this point.
Okay. Because I was wondering why we're piecemealing it, but that, that makes sense. Thank you.
All right, any more questions? Anyone from the public like to speak to this? All right, I'll bring it back. Looking for a motion and a second to set a public hearing for October 8th?
So, so moved.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right, motion will carry. There'll be a public hearing on October 8th. Now for our fifth and last agenda item tonight, it is a city code text amendment, neighborhood parkland dedication.
Thank you. Tonight we have Rita, and she is from HKGI. She's a vice president there, and she has much experience with this. She helped with the park dedication at City of Johnson, and I'll let her take over the presentation from here.
All right, good evening. Please let me know if there's any issues with hearing me. This evening, I'm going to provide an update and information about the park dedication ordinance that we had put together. So if we can go to the overview, just, I know that I had met with you a few months ago, and we'll kind of cover some of the same information, but now we actually have a draft ordinance, which was involved in your packet. So park dedication itself, cities are allowed to require a reasonable portion of buildable land to be dedicated to the public or preserve for future use. This actual, this dedication of land has to be tied to the subdivision of land or a specific residential plan development. It, it doesn't occur for like building permits just themselves, but to the actual creation of new development in the community. Dedication has to be directly tied to that new growth that I referenced, so it needs to be located where, nearby where the development was actually occurring, and it needs to be proportional to the impact. We want to make sure that new residents who will add additional need and onto the park system will be able to contribute to that park system, so it can grow. And that's what everybody who has already been in the city has done as part of their process, and so we're continuing that forward. I always like to mention when I deal with park dedication, that it's not expected that park dedication will fully fund the system, but it is something that does contribute to the growth of the community. Next slide. Currently, there is limited state rules or guidance, and I'm not going to read this for you, but there is a reference. In-state statute that does allow for the dedication of land, that's, and it's part of all the broader definition of streets and alleys and parks and open spaces. So that is where the city has the right to have some type of rules about park dedication. Next slide. Currently, there are a few different places where park dedication is somewhat referenced. It's not as explicit as will be once we have this new ordinance in place. So you can see on the slide, Section 25 Improvements does require the installation of improvements, and that includes sidewalks, walkways, and trails. Section 26 does establish the fact that subdivisions shall be designed to meet neighborhood park and open space needs. And then Section 2127 states that when there is a plan, that you can require the dedication. Next slide. One of the issues with the current approach is that there's really not a dedication formula and specific requirements about the type of land that would be dedicated, the process that would be used. The only reference really is the mixed-use district, which requires 10% open space with a master plan. Otherwise, it's not very clear, and that means that the city needs to negotiate with each developer on a case-by-case basis. And that's not always ideal. As part of the process, there's a lot of elements that need to happen. And so it's something that isn't preferred by the city, and now that you have a park master plan to refer to, you have the foundation to identify more specifically how park dedication might occur. So the proposed approach on the next slide talks about some of the benefits of where we are proposing to move into the future. One element that is always nice, and one, in terms of codes, is the fact that if we have a code, that it's a level playing field. So all developers are treated similarly, it's predictable, they can read that section and understand how it would apply to their particular development. It helps determine the cost of development more accurately. It's very difficult in terms of development to understand if you're negotiating what the potential cost might be, and so that can help a developer move forward with their planning and their development. And it ensures the parkland provisions are adequate to meet community needs. As we move forward on the next slide, there's some key provisions that I'm going to walk through in Article 4. So we are proposing in this ordinance that there'll be a new Article 4 specifically called Neighborhood Parkland Dedication. The key provisions, these are the headers, and I'm going to walk through each of these. I do want to note that the order that I'm walking through the information tonight doesn't exactly match the ordinance that's in front of you, and it's just because of the way that it's easier to understand and how it relates together. But the ordinance is ordered a little bit differently than this. So as we move forward, the actual dedication formula, which is really the foundations of the ordinance, we identified a formula that can be based on the number of acres if parkland needed per 1,000 residents. Rather than establishing just a generic statement, we like to put together an analysis that helps you identify per resident how much parkland would need to be dedicated. We find that to be based in information as opposed to just a random percentage. And so we use the analysis in the recent park master plan to identify in the park system how much acres of parkland is the city providing and intending to provide per 1,000 residents. So that gives us our foundation for the formula. And then we also use the census to identify how many people are there per household in each type of land use. So there was some analysis done of how many people live in a single-family home versus, a two-family home versus a multifamily. And so we use that to create the formula. I do want to note, under recommendation, you can see that there's a cap. There is established a cap on the required parkland at 10% of the total area. That's just to ensure that, that the requirement is reasonable, especially as you increase the number of households and individuals on a particular development project. So there is a cap that is being recommended to be established. On the next slide, we provide an example. So this is the formula that's in the ordinance. As you can see, this example assumes that there's a 100-unit low-density residential development. You can see the formula that we had of six acres per 1,000 residents, it's transformed into an individual number per person. The persons per household according to the census is 2.9 persons per household on average. You can see that the land dedication then is 1.74 acres. So that is similar in size to Overman Park. We thought that was helpful to kind of give you a sense of how many acres that might be when you think about 1.74 acres. If you can move to the next slide. Land suitability. We want to make sure that the land that is given to the city is suitable for use for a neighborhood park. Historically, at times, there has been particular interest in providing the city with land that really isn't suitable for a park. And so we specifically included some stipulations in the new ordinance to try and give some more framework for that. You can see, the land dedicated must be of a shape and size, have the appropriate topography, so not too steep for use as a neighborhood park. We, it also includes regulations about having street frontage on a public street. We want to make sure parks are accessible, and they're visible, and they don't become private parks because they're hidden behind neighborhoods. And so those are two requirements. There's also a statement that talks about what won't be given credit for. So the city could accept more land that would have these elements, but the actual documentation that you met your park dedication requirement would not include any of these lands. So streams or wetlands or stormwater drainage areas, steep slopes, private amenities. So if you have a private open space amenity for, for a townhouse or a multifamily development or even a single family, you wouldn't be given credit for it. As I said, these elements are things that maybe might be in the land, but you would still need to have the minimum amount of land that would be usable for a neighborhood park. If we move to the next slide, that focuses a little bit on park location. I snipped a little bit of the new Parks Master Plan. Obviously, you won't be able to read this, but just so you kind of can see, there is in the neighborhood, or in the Parks Plan, a section on neighborhood parks where it talks about what is the intent with neighborhood parks, what are the typical facilities. Generally, the Parks Master Plan identified that the city is aiming for parks that are about four to eight acres in size. You can see in our example development of 100 units, that the park dedication requirement would be 1.74 acres. In that case, that development, if, wouldn't necessarily provide all of the land for a park to serve that area. And when that happens, it's recommended that that area to be dedicated be located on the edge of the development, so that when you have the next subdivision, that you can add those together and make a reasonably sized park. The intent is to have these parks that are of this four to eight acres in size, you can put a nice amount of amenities to it. If you have sidewalks and trails, that allows you to kind of aim for about a half mile between each of the parks. And that's really much more efficient in terms of maintaining parks and making sure that the park system serves all of the neighborhoods. On the next slide, we talk a little bit about dedication methods. I've talked through the land dedication in terms of the formula that we would have, the requirements for the land. An alternative that is available is payment and of fee in lieu of the land. So an applicant may request, and the city council can then determine whether it's appropriate or not, to provide payment of fee in lieu of land. So that's typically, we might see that if the development is small, and there really isn't a reasonable way of dedicating land. But again, that's, that's something that can be requested. You can also request a combination of land dedication and fee in lieu. And these are unique situations that will have to be determined as we walk through the development process. Each alternative would be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. Now that you have an updated Parks Master Plan that really provides you the foundation of identifying where did we intend parks to be, does this make sense? And it really provides the guidance that's helpful. And that's why it's typical for a park dedication ordinance like this to be proposed at the same time or immediately subsequent to a Parks Master Plan, because now you have the foundation that you need in order to make those decisions. If there is fee to be used within the same, with, sorry, if there is fee that will be given instead of land, that fee is placed into a neighborhood park district fund, and any of the funds from that would be used specifically for park improvements within that district. I pulled a map on this slide from the Parks Master Plan that shows the different districts that were created. These districts were based on major roadway corridors, other types of waterways, topography. So they're kind of the logical areas where if you are a resident within that area, kind of the parks that you would use to provide your neighborhood services would be located generally within that same area. So if a, if the city accepts fee in lieu, then you would be able to have funds that would contribute to the development of new features or acquisition of land for parks within that specific area. If we move on to the next slide, the developer responsibilities. There is requirements within the new ordinance that state that utility connection, connections need to be made. So for example, if you need, if you were going to have a water fountain at a park, you would want to make sure that there's water at the facility if there's going to be light. So any utility connections that are deemed to be needed based on the potential use of that park, public sidewalk would be provided along the street frontage, pedestrian connections to nearby trails or three-block sidewalks, sidewalks as needed. So that's talking about park dedication, and then also talking about kind of the general layout of the subdivision to make sure that residents can reach this park. And then in some cases, you may have them prepare the site to city specifications. That would mean things like grading, it may happen. And so that's something that would be identified as the development is be identified as the development is under consideration. In addition to Article 4 that I just walked through, there are some related city code changes. As you can see, they're kind of in four different sections. Generally, we needed to add some new definitions to help support the park dedication ordinance, so those went into the definition sections. In Section 5, there's a new minimum standard to include parkland. In all of the sections, we clarified and established consistent terminology. For example, it's called the Parks Master Plan, the Comprehensive Plan, making sure any of the plans have the current terminology of the plans that you have in place today. And then in terms of the minimum standards for design, it just removed any language and referred to the new Article 4. We wanted to make sure that if folks were in that area, that they knew that there was an actual park dedication article that they should be looking at. And then the 2127, which I'd walked through at the beginning of the presentation, that's eliminated because that's all covered in Article 4. So sometimes we eliminated and sometimes we added language to provide clarification. There is also some zoning code changes that were proposed. These sections relate to the planned residence district and the mixed-use residential district. It's making sure that folks realize that there is a park dedication and it refers back to the park dedication area. As you can see, one caveat with the mixed-use district, it does require the dedication of neighborhood parkland, but it does specify that it may count towards that 10% required open space for the development. And I had referenced that at the beginning of the presentation, it was kind of one of the areas where there was a little bit more specificity. So we did clarify, so if there is a mixed-use residential district development, there is clarity on how that would be applied. So the next steps tonight, we had included in the packet Planning Commission on Ordinance for your review, and I can certainly answer any questions. There is consideration ultimately by you at a public hearing, and so we need the public hearing date to be set for October 8th, and then ultimately after your review, and if you have a recommendation, then it would be considered by the city council. So our request this evening is to discuss the proposed changes. I can answer any questions that you may have and set that public hearing.
I have a question.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so we do have a question.
So like a planned neighborhood such as like the Western Home Communities, that I'd have to look at a map and we have to lay it out, but let's say they have 200 acres right now under development in their whole setup. So they would have 20 acres set aside for a 20-acre park out there, is that the?
So the entire area that zoned MU, they currently have a master plan for Pinnacle Prairie. They did set aside 10% as open space, but it is in different parts of that whole development. So not, so Western Homes is part of a larger mixed-use area. So if you look at the master plan for Pinnacle Prairie, you're going to see trails and parkland spaced out throughout that whole development. So it doesn't have to be all in the one area, for example. And I think there is a small park that's at Western Home that might be private, I'm not sure, but.
So if you have, if a developer was going to do, let's say, 100 acres, and they're going to do it in 10 phases, then are we going to end up with a bunch of little one-acre spots, or you want that developed into one piece of?
So when they come in for their initial rezoning and master, the master plan goes with the rezoning to MU, at that point in time, we want, just like we would want them to identify at a preliminary plat stage, we're going to want them to identify in their master plan where they're going to put their 10%. And as part of that 10%, they have to meet the park, some of that 10% has to be public parkland. So it would all be determined by them, and they would design their subdivision to meet those ordinances at that time, at the master plan stage.
The whole thing, the whole 10% would have to meet that. Other land that's open, like wetlands or drainage or detention basins, would not count toward that 10%.
Yeah, and I'm not exactly sure how the ordinance is written, but yeah, that we wouldn't count, you know, wetlands and stream corridors.
Don't count wetlands.
Right, right. I don't think we count those now, but, yeah. And then with a master plan community, of course, later on, they may come back for a preliminary plat, and at that point in time, of course, things are more specific at a preliminary plat stage. So if we need to adjust something from the master plan at the time of preliminary plat and like look at that formula again, it can be adjusted at that point in time to make it more specific to exactly what they're, you know, when they lay out the lots, for example.
Right. I do think, there's two parts to this. I think it is good that we do have some, that we establish some official guidelines so that we're not telling one developer one thing and another another, and then, you know, somebody is required to do something that somebody else isn't. That's the good part. The part that I think we all need to think about is that when we do all these things and then we, say we have that 10 acres that they have to develop, then we also have 10 acres of grading, road going by it, sidewalks are required, so this is all money that adds to the cost of the lot, to the underlying people that are buying the lot. So we're not, as a city, we're not saying, we're creating a fund where we're going to buy that 10 acres, you know, we want you to design it and then we're going to pay you the $50,000 per acre that you have in that spot. We're not saying that, we're saying you just have to give that to us. So that $500,000, let's say, gets added on to those couple hundred lots or 300 lots or whatever it might be. So, I mean, everybody up here can do the math, so that adds money to every single lot. So we talk about affordable housing, and we're always talking about wanting affordable housing, but then we do something that puts the burden on the developer, and it's not like they're making so much money that they're just going to eat that half million dollars. It's going to come to the people buying the lots and the people building the houses and the people trying to develop that.
Just to double check, is the MU district 10%, that already is in code, is that correct?
Yes.
So that would not be a change through this process. We're talking about through the R2 and R4 and the other ones, and that is a 6% cap. So while you're still correct in that the money has to go somewhere, I do think it's important that it's not 10% that we're changing with this process, it's a cap of 6% most of the time significantly less, is how I'm understanding it.
Right. The cap is 10%, the formula is 6%. But the reason there's a cap there is because if you think about a multifamily development, for example, it's a lot more efficient, right? It's using less land for more units. So we didn't want those properties to be unfairly burdened with so much land that it takes away most of their development potential, right? So the formula didn't quite work, you know, we want to make sure that there's a cap of 10%, regardless of, you know, the density of your development, you know, to the idea of affordable housing and not discouraging higher-density housing.
To your point, Gordon, I think you could argue that houses near parks probably have more value. I asked this of our consultants last time, I don't know if that's into something that you can calculate, but it would be really interesting to understand if there was a way to say, you know, homes near parks might, you know, have more considerable value than others and they're more, might, yeah, it would fall back on the person purchasing the home, but they're also gaining those amenities as well. So just, I guess, a counterpoint to that.
I don't know if Rita has any comments to answer any of these questions too. Rita's still online and she could answer some questions too, her thoughts on some of those things, because she's worked in other communities as well.
I don't have a specific number, but I do agree, and there are studies that exist that have demonstrated that the proximity to park and open space does increase the value for the lots that are immediately adjacent to the park and for blocks away from it. We also know from all of our work that the number one element or amenity that a lot of residents talk about are parks and trails. That is what people talk about when you ask about what do you love about your community, why did you move to this community? And so it's important to continue what you already have in the community and continue it as you have new subdivisions being built. I don't know if there was a specific other question, because there was a lot of technical elements that I, that you all, staff knows much more than I do about specific projects.
I would add to that also that I fully support the concept of setting aside green space, open space. Where I'm coming from, I'm not sure where I'm at with requiring that area to be designated as parks versus green spaces, open spaces, because it can be, there's a difference there, right, in uses, in ownership, in are the trails included? If you have a development that has large wetland, right, that is completely discounted. So I'll have to wrap my head around green space, open space versus specific parks.
And I'd like to just reference one element of that, is that there is a limit to what the city can do for requirements in terms of what the state and case law allows. So the state and case law is very specific in terms of supporting neighborhood park developments as opposed to open space in general or community parks. So there's not as much opportunity to require just general open space or community parks, and that's why this has been developed the way it has been developed.
So I guess I'm maybe not understanding quite your question or concern, maybe you could just elaborate a little bit more, because they can include, so I think Rita went through this, when they're considering, you know, like say, we have a development that has a stream corridor and a wetland in it. So it could be that they have the park right near that stream corridor. There just has to be enough parkland there that it's usable, but it could be that the developer proposes to also give the land the greenway along the stream corridor and dedicate that to the city as well, and then the city, you all and the city council would have to consider whether the city is willing to take on that additional green space as, you know, it can be included as part of the park, but it doesn't count toward that formula then. So we want usable space that's supposed to be for the neighborhood use, but there could be lots of elements of greenways and green corridors, and that's where a lot of the trails go, for example. So it doesn't mean that we wouldn't get open space, it just means because a lot of that land is not developable. You can't develop wetlands, you can't develop stream corridors, so it's not like we won't be getting those things, it just, in addition to that, we would be getting usable park space, according to this formula.
And just to be clear too, it's not just, when we think of park, it's not just a big square with a playground on it, it include, like, the space includes trails and the immediate, you know, nature next to the trails too. That's the 6% or 10% or whatever goes towards that as well, correct?
Right. Well, no, we, for the formula itself, it wouldn't include the elements that we had up on the screen. We wouldn't count, in other words, if you had a two-acre wetland, we wouldn't count that toward your park dedication. But maybe you would include it in the dedication, so you'd get more land dedicated to the city if the city's willing to accept a wetland, for example, as part of the parkland. But we want to make sure that the portion that's dedicated for the use as neighborhood parkland meets that formula, yeah. And the subdivision ordinance also already requires, we have a trails plan, we have the comp plan that shows the trails, so we're always looking at those plans, and they are required to make provision for trails and connections between parks and that sort of thing already in their subdivisions when they come through. So I think you've seen that in some of our previous subdivisions where there was a trail marked as a future trail in the comp plan, and we then had land, the developer set aside that land for a trail.
Maybe this is obvious or silly, but just to be ultra-clear, the land, the land that is dedicated for the parkland, that is on the cost of developer to develop a park or it's just dedicated to the city that will build the park on that land, right?
Yes. They dedicate the land to the city, the city then develops the park.
Right. And there's no timeline necessarily built into this for when that park needs to happen, right?
Right. Once the land's dedicated, as far as like putting amenities into the park?
Yeah, yeah.
Right. That's all up for the CIP and the council deciding when the funds are available to develop those parks.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Although there is an element to that, that the developer is required to grade that, put black topsoil, seed it, and have it prepped as a piece of grass. Have it, have, and this said, to have infrastructure in it as well, so might have plumbing in there, water sewer run into that lot, and the development cost of it.
Yes, and it just has to be made available if it's needed for that park. So we would look at each preliminary plat that comes before the commission, then we'd be looking at those things. Now, it could be that you've got a nice woodland or grove of trees that's perfect for neighborhood park space as well as some additional space, and we, so we may not always want to grade and seed all of it, but sometimes we would. So it just really depends on the particular site and what's being proposed for dedication.
I know I asked the question, I've already forgot it, but, you know, we've been doing these residential development agreements where the developer can recoup some of the cost of streets, sewer, whatnot. Would those grading, you know, utilities to these parks be included in that?
So we did check on the residential TIF rules from the state, and yes, they can include parkland dedication, you know, what they're dedicating as part of the infrastructure that would be included, the cost would be included with that TIF formula.
All right, and that's only rebated back if that neighborhood gets fully developed and sold and becomes part of the tax base, and then it's rebated back as taxes are started to get collected based on the percentage of low income, or not even low income, but affordable housing, which is a number that's, that's $244,000, so that's unattainable in our market. But, so they're going to get a less percentage of that tax back. If, in a new construction, your full rate of tax doesn't really kick in for a couple years, so the tax for the first couple of years is pretty small, so it could take years for the developer to get paid back on that program. That's if it all gets sold out, so they have to get most of that property sold before that happens, but, just so you know how that works, but. And just for the record also, I'm not anti-park, I love the parks, I love the trails and the systems that we have. I'm just suggesting that perhaps instead of putting all the burden on the developer, that we ought to be maybe purchasing that land from the developer or saying, hey, this is going to require five acres of park, that land, once it gets to that point where it's got the street, the infrastructure, the development, everything, they've got $50,000 an acre into that easy, maybe $60,000. So I'm suggesting that, that, okay, we're going to need to set some land aside for the park, but it's going to be purchased upfront at this cost, and that's what, it's going to cover the cost of that land. So that's my suggestion.
Any more questions, comments?
I guess I have one more question for Rita and maybe staff. The persons per household, that figuring that out, they said they looked at the, you looked at the census and maybe you have it designated, you know, you used the 2.9. That wasn't for all of Cedar Falls, I imagine, like how would the developer figure that out?
So they don't have to figure that out. Go ahead, Rita.
No, that's okay. So actually, in the formula, in the actual ordinance, if you were to look to that section, it lays out specifically by the type of housing unit you're proposing what that assumption would be. So what we did is we took the census, the reason we use the census is that it can be updated then, as things change, it can be revised and taken a look at. So it looks at one-unit dwellings at 2.9 persons per dwelling unit, two to four-unit dwellings at 2.29, and then dwellings with five or more units at 1.63. It's important to do that differentiation because we do know that single-family homes would have more people in it than a dwelling with five-plus units. But, and then we use the census, as I said, just to make sure, that it's something that's based in an actual analysis that's done. It's not just an anecdote or based on past practice, it's something that we can count on and that we can look at from time to time and update as it's needed. Since I have the floor, I'm just going to mention something, because while there was questions, I was looking for the statistic that you actually asked me about, and there's different places, but I landed on the National Association of Realtors, kind of their quick takeaways on trails and greenways. And what they reference is that living near trails and greenways will raise your property value on average 3% to 5% and sometimes as high as 15%. So that's specific to trails and greenways, but just to kind of, to your point about, does it matter if you're near a park or trail or greenway, so.
And Rita, you didn't have the chart in, I think you included it with your previous presentation, but we also, you have experiences in other communities and you did check other communities, I think you presented this last time, kind of to make sure we're kind of in the ballpark of what other cities are doing in Iowa as far as parkland dedication.
Yes, and that was in the memo for the packet. There was, it shows you Ankeny, Johnston, Norwalk, Urbandale, Waki, and Iowa City, and kind of what folks do. And different, historically, there's been a little bit more of just a straight 5% or 10%. We have moved away from that with other communities because of the fact that We have moved away from that with other communities because of the fact that that number isn't necessarily based on something. So we tried to create a formula that you could understand where it came from. We have the documentation that shows your existing park system, your proposed park system, and then the census number.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion or questions for Rita or staff? Okay, we're looking for a motion to set a public hearing for October 8th.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries for a public hearing on October 8th. That ends any agenda items tonight. Is there any commission updates for tonight?
I don't have anything for you tonight.
All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, meeting is adjourned. Everyone, have a great evening. Thank you.